Counselor Dran, are you there? Counselor Dran?
Yes, I am, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We acknowledge, appreciate the land in which we gather is the traditional onto the territory of the Mi'kmaq First Nation. Call to order. Now, Mr. McKeown just handed out an outreach center, a Park Street Community Meeting tomorrow night. There is a meeting taking place at the East Link Center.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Is this on the agenda?
It's under call to order.
Pardon me?
It's under call to order.
What do you mean, call to order?
I'm just laying out the rules for tomorrow, for the possibility of tomorrow night's meeting.
This is not on the agenda, sir.
Yeah, no.
It's not on the agenda.
No, but sir, can I just finish?
Yeah.
So-
It's not on the agenda.
Some of the members of the staff have some concerns, and I know Counselor Beck, I spoke to Counselor Beck about it too. I just want to lay out what our responsibilities are as counselors in public settings. I know myself, as a counselor, who was both taken to task for voicing my opinions on a particular project, and legal told me that I was in conflict of interest, so I was removed from the vote. And the points that are laid out here were provided by senior staff, Danny, Mr. Danny Jenkins and Mr. Mike Russ, to ensure that we understand the rules of engagement on any public meeting, whether it's tomorrow night, it's next week. We have a public meeting on this issue on 15 Park Street that will be common to council and going to public engagement in January, mid-January, late January. So we do have a public responsibility when we go to that meeting also. So I leave those points with you, and if there's any clarification required, then you can speak to Mr. Dan Jenkins or Mr. Mike Russ afterwards. Yeah, Counselor Twill?
Yeah, well, it's, it's, I'm quite amazed that, you know, the staff has taken upon themselves to come up with a list of talking points. Guess the question is, who instructed the staff to come up with these talking points? Who instructed the staff? Who?
Counselor Twill, when it comes to instructions to the staff, the staff has a responsibility for-
No, no, I asked the question-
No, no, let me finish. The staff has a responsibility for the integrity and the respect of this institution in our community. They have concerns because of everything that's on social media about this meeting, and that we have to be careful, as elected officials, what we say in public places where meetings are not being called by this council, but being called by other organizations. I've attended many residence meeting, resident meetings. I made sure that I keep my opinions to myself, because we will be going to a public engagement. We will have the presenters, the provincial government, making their case. I can't put my opinion out there before they've not, before they presented their case.
Right, so you didn't answer my question.
I did.
Who instructed the staff? Excuse me. Who instructed the staff to come up with this list?
Again, I'll repeat, and I'm going to ask Mr. Jenkins to speak to that. Mr. Jenkins?
Thank you, your worship. So no one instructed the staff to, to come up with this list. It was a discussion that I had with my senior communications officer in conjunction with some of the other senior staff that were concerned that we wanted to make sure that members of council were clear that there is a, there is a process that the city has established in accordance with the Planning Act, that's a provincial legislative legislation, where if there's an amendment to zoning development bylaw, that we are obligated to hold a public hearing, a public meeting, and to then make a decision on the advice that we receive from, from our planners and the information that we receive at the public meeting. But that, the important thing to remember is that members of council are, in effect, the jury in this deliberation, and there is an obligation for procedural fairness, and it's difficult if members of council are in advance of a decision in a situation where they're providing comments or participating actively in, in something other than the process that's been laid out in the Planning Act, which is the public meeting, and then the application comes before Planning Board and council for a decision. So it's important that members of council remain objective in, in, in hearing the information and forming an objective decision that's procedurally fair to both the applicant and to the members of the community who may voice an objection. This has been supported in some legal advice that we've gotten on other matters, and we just want to make sure that members of council don't put themselves in a difficult position where they may be, there may be calls for members to remove themselves from the matter because they would be perceived to be in a conflict of interest, where a decision's being made on, on, on the point in question here is the, is the outrun to reach center application for, for rezoning, so.
Okay, Counselor Twill, just your second time, because we have guests here that want to make their presentation.
Oh, I know, but I didn't expect this to be on the agenda.
It's not on the agenda, it's part of the call to order.
I didn't expect this to walk in and deal with this now, so, you know, with all due respect to our guests, I'm glad they're here and I look forward to their presentation, but to come in here and be blindsided by this.
Yeah.
You know, Mr. Jenkins, so you decided to take it upon yourself, paraphrasing, use your words, correct?
No one through, through his worship to Counselor Twill, no one directed me to do this, but I did do it in, based on the advice that I received from staff and other members of the senior management team, and in reflection of some legal advice that we've received in the past on other matters that would be directly correlated.
No, thank you, Counselor Twill, we're moving on. No, we're moving on, because the professionals have spoken, you've gotten his opinion, his-
Do you have other questions?
Yeah, no, we have to get going, you have spoken twice. Counselor Matar.
One side.
No.
Yeah, one sided, as usual.
Well, clearly, I, you know, echo the same remarks that Counselor Twill is as well. It's kind of catching us off guard here, being the counselor of the ward who feels an obligation to represent his constituents, certainly in a, in a meeting that is being held by the residents. Is this suggesting that in no way, shape, or form should any counselors say anything in any way? I mean, it's one thing to get up and, you know, lay your cards out, I guess, on the table, that's one thing. It's another to get up and, well, like, you know, just in support of the residents who are there that you represent. I guess I'm confused as to what the message is here.
Yeah, well, we do have a public meeting coming up, and that public meeting will address concerns from both pro and con. Mike, Dan, do you want to address his question? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just for clarity to the counselor's question, I think the, that's not what is being suggested here. What is being suggested is that council remain open-minded as we go through this procedural process in the evaluation of the report, working towards that public meeting that is legislated under the Planning Act that we go through, and we're still dealing, dealing with the notice of motion that will come forward through the Planning and Heritage Committee early December, and then for consideration by council in early December as well. So again, just to reinforce, we would advise and guide council to try and avoid any perception that there would be bias in that procedure and process.
Okay, declarations of conflict of interest. Any declarations of conflict of interest? Okay, pool of agenda. Moved, I need a seconder, second by Counselor Ramsey, all those in favor? All those against? Counselor Dran, yea or nay?
In favor.
Okay. So on the first agenda item, we have the 2025-2030, a UPEI, University of Prince Edward Island Strategic Planning Process. Myrtle Jenkins, can I get you to present your team, and then we will, and just please use the mic, because you're being recorded.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm Myrtle Jenkins Smith, Executive Director at UPEI for Development Alumni and Government Relations, and with me is-
Hello, I'm Wendy Rogers, I'm the President of University of Prince Edward Island.
I'm Nicole Phillips, I'm the Director of Communications and University Relations at UPEI.
So the process you wish to follow, do you want to, do you wish to start, Madam President?
Sure, thanks. So we are hoping to have a fairly open and casual discussion about what you might be thinking about the future of UPEI from 2025 to 2030. We're just in the process of building a new strategic plan, and we are talking to communities all across the island, you're the fourth one, and of course, UPEI sits here in Charlottetown, and so we have a very important relationship with the city, an important member of the community, and we are interested in what you see for the future of the university. We didn't bring a specific presentation, but happy to answer any questions that you might have as we go along, or provide you any other kinds of information, and that's partly because we just want to hear right, what's on your minds right from the beginning, and I'm also happy to tell you a little bit about some of the themes that we've heard so far as we've gone through our consultations.
Could we start with some of those themes that you've already heard, or do you want to, please?
Sure. So, so far, we've met within the university itself, a number of different open meetings with all members of the university, as well as meetings with staff separate from faculty members, separate from graduate students, and then undergraduate students, and then the, the Students Union. We've also gone to Summerside, O'Leary, and-
Albertine.
Alberton, thank you, and consulted with people in those areas, and we've heard a variety of things, including, of course, the university continues to pursue its action plan towards a culture of trust, safety, and inclusion, so that remains high on our agenda. The students are looking for greater clarity in communications around their journeys through the university, everything from how professors are taking up their classes, as well as the curricula that they follow. More broadly, the university is interested in sustainability, both institutional sustainability, so how robust and stable is the institution itself, as well as environmental sustainability. And I would also say that there's a theme emerging around having a stronger presence in community, in Charlottetown and in other communities across the island, and there's some important ways that we need to partner with Holland College, of course, that is another important constituent.
Okay, it's, floor is open? We're quiet?
If I hadn't known that this was on the agenda, what it was about, all I got was a thing on the agenda a couple days ago, there's a strategic report from 2025 to 2030. Had no idea what it was about, so I'm certainly not prepared for asking any questions, to be honest with you.
Hmm, it should have said strategic plan from 2025 to 2030.
I thought it said strategic plan.
Oh, strategic plan, yeah.
Yep.
It's UPEI Strategic Planning Process.
Didn't say a report or anything, or anything, just said that you're going to go over strategic plan?
Well, there isn't a strategic plan, because it's not 2025 yet, so we're here to try to develop one.
Yeah, but it would have been a nice heads up had council got the heads up, you guys are coming with the presentation on what it was about, and you're looking for some feedback, that's all I'm saying.
Sure.
I don't know, is anybody else prepared for it?
Okay, well, thanks so much.
Well, as you can see, it says no attached material, it's a planning process, so they're seeking our input on what we see for the University of Prince Edward Island and our community, our greater community. So my question would be, where is your theme on truth and reconciliation?
So that, thank you for that suggestion. We are interested in pursuing truth and reconciliation, indigenization and decolonization, and that falls under the purview also of our action plan. So the action plan covers equity, diversity, inclusion, and reconciliation, and the main theme there is to grow strength in the faculty ICARIS, Indigenous Knowledge as Education, Research, and Applied Studies, and then also to develop institution-wide indigenous initiatives that would be beyond what the faculty would do, but the faculty would be more focused on scholarship and education and required courses across all programs, that kind of thing.
Counselor McLeire?
Yeah, thank you for, thank you for being here. Just maybe a couple things, just curious, the foreign student piece is a real challenge, I think, for the country across, you know, the board for universities, just curious how you're, you know, planning for that with the adjustment and, you know, cutbacks, and then just the other broad question would be, you know, the university vis-à-vis the med school and the coming together of that, and how that kind of, kind of going to coexist, and I'm sure there's great synergies expected there, and just-
Sure. So the international students, over everybody that's not aware, the Immigration, Refugees, and Citizenship Canada made some new legislation in January of 2024, and then they reiterated that just about a month ago, where they restricted the number of visas that would be available to students to study in Canada. And that had a very negative effect, a depressing effect, on applications to Canada, and it had a negative effect on the reputation of Canada as a target place to study for students internationally. So UPEI, like every university, had an effect of that. Right now, we are down about 50% of the students that we normally would admit into first year. We did pick up some new students in second, third, and fourth year, so there was a little bit of an offset there. If we continue to decline by 50% per year of new students, international students coming into first year, that puts us on track for, for quite a negative budget impact. For this year, we are projecting a budget impact of $3 million. For next year, we are projecting a further impact of another $3 million if we do nothing, but we are not going to do nothing. We are working on a strategic enrollment plan to target international students in a different way than we have historically. We have to be a little bit more careful, because the IRCC has appeared to have changed some of the criteria that it use, uses to approve applications for visas, so the visa approval rate has also gone down, and it's in particularly gone down from countries that are a little less economically or socially stable, so that affects what countries we might partner with. We also intend to offset with an increasing domestic enrollment, primarily island students, but also Canadian students off-island, and we will be working on other revenue generation strategies through different, different offices that we have across the university. We usually call those ancillary services, so that's residences, food services, conference services, putting on events, hosting corporations that might want to come in and do some learning, for instance, programs that we could develop through our continuing education department. On medicine, so that's actually going really well, so you probably have all seen the nice new medicine building, it's going up right on time, and it's really beautiful, and a lot of, we're doing a lot of tours of that, and a number of members of the council were able to go and tour the building. It is, we are calling it cutting-edge and future-ready, and so it will be serving not only the medical program, but the nursing program, the emergency responders program, firefighters, police, and we've had a number of requests from all kinds of agencies that would benefit from doing a simulated medical education in that building. That's one of its big attractions, is, is the simulated learning center there. So the applications for the new students has come and gone, the applications are closed, and we are told, it's confidential, so even we do not know the exact number of applicants, but we were, we are told there is a healthy number of applicants, and we are expecting to admit 20 new students starting in August.
20 island students, correct?
20 island students. The program is only available to island students.
Right. And when the vet school started back in 1984, I think it started with 30 students, and now it's up to 60 or 80?
Per year.
Per year? 60?
68 per year, yeah, across the provinces. It just increased in the last agreement that was signed off just about a couple months ago.
Right. Counselor Matar?
Thank you, thank you, your worship. Just in review, like, taking a quick look at the previous strategic plan, you had one of the areas that were your priority was your, was your community partnerships. So clearly, there's a partnership right now with UPEI and the city of Charlottetown. I've only been in council for a couple years, so some of those partnerships that come more to light for me are, from a financial aspect, we contribute to the, to the Bell Line Center, the carrier, the McLaughlin Arena, and the capital and operational budgets, and, you know, some other initiatives that have come to council for support. So I guess, you know, when looking back at the relationships that you've had with your partner, so the community partner relationships you had across the island in Charlottetown, is there anything that you're looking to, to highlight or revisit, or, you know, to continue with? I know that's not so much, it might be more in the weeds, but I think, you know, from where I'm looking, my short experience here has been more on that financial side. Not to say there hasn't been other things that just haven't really been glaringly obvious to me, but it has been more on the, the financial components from that partnership relationship that we've had, or that we have and continue to have. So I'm not sure if you can speak to that, I'm just in the way of, what does that look like? I assume that's a goal to go forward with, a priority is community partnerships into your next strategic plan, but are you looking to broaden that, you know, scale that back a bit? I don't know where your metrics are and what, how those relationships have panned out over the last three to five years.
Sure, well, I'll get started on that. Myrtle does direct most of our partnerships, and so I will ask her to fill in any gaps that I create. You're probably aware that I've been here just under six months now, and so I'm not aware of every single partnership that we have. What I can speak to is that the university offers great opportunities. For example, if council were interested in pursuing a particular area, bringing in a guest speaker, something like that, that would be a really good opportunity to partner with the university, because we could get someone of mutual interest, we can do different kinds of workshops, you know, maybe, maybe it's on environmental sustainability, we do have the Canadian Center for Climate Change and Adaptation, we could bring those speakers in, and it would be an opportunity to ask questions specific to the city and beyond, and then also to invite students so that counselors could engage with students on the kinds of projects that they're doing to ensure environmental sustainability, and very often, those kinds of projects result in partnerships with the municipalities, but, but also with, with other organizations in the city that might be interested in working together on something like, you know, composting, all, all kinds of things could be possible from that. In terms of facilities, we have the Performing Arts Center, it's new, it's a beautiful facility, it's a little 400-seat theater, so there's lots of opportunities there to work on anything in the performing arts, theater, music, again, any kinds of presentations fit in there well. Sports is always a great way to connect with the community, especially with schools, high schools, elementary schools, and kids and parents, and so working with the university on bringing the Panthers to schools to come and talk about sports, lifestyle, sports ethics, sports values, physical activity, these kinds of things are very popular. Summer sport camps or other kinds of physical activity camps that bring the children into the school, where again, Panther athletes and Panther coaches can be involved in sport development, partnerships around any kind of tournaments, or those new sports that might come to the university, those are always really great ways to engage, and then with, with any- And then with, with any kinds of corporate or organizational partnerships, we would want to work together. We're always looking to enhance the reputation of the university, enhance the reputation of the city, enhance the reputation of the province, make very good scholarly and research contributions to each of those jurisdictions. And we're always making sure that we can extend the reach and the narrative of the university so that it enhances the, the reputation of the whole province, which of course enhances the reputation of the university. And it helps make the world better because good graduates, good research help us do better as we make our way through the world. So we would be interested in many ways of partnering together.
Not much to add, Wendy, but I think this, what we felt, looking at the strategic plan, taking it from a different angle, is asking the community, is there anything you are hearing from people that are moving into your community that they may say, if we had this, this would really make a difference? We know the university is very important for people living in our, in our province, our city. We only have one university, and we're just trying to expand on that to see how we can even make it bigger and better. And that there's, this is the opportunity to hearing any suggestions that you might have or you might have heard from people that have moved into our capital city.
Counselor McCabe.
I just went back and looked at your existing strategic plan, and I'm sure you're still working, because it's a, it's a big framework that I think we're always trying to continue to work on and improve. And I'm also a school councillor in high school. So it's interesting for me when I look at some of your, how are we going to attract, recruit, retain some students to, to come to UPEI and be a part of that. I just spent the day at Holland College today, and they're doing really great partnership with like the government on trying to really make it more attractive for students to get into the professions that we know. So you talk about people having access through your medical center. That's going to help restrict efforts on our healthcare system, but at the same time with the provincial government, things like maybe cheaper education to attract our nurses, maybe, you know, opening that up where teachers are in shortage right now. How can we attract more people into the education profession, whether it's not putting such heavy reliance on your marks and things, but more, you know, attractive to look for that well-rounded person? It's, it's going to take a little work, but we do have some really good people that would make wonderful teachers that necessarily aren't your top students. So more collaboration with your, with your schools would be, would be a good, good groundwork. And also, I think as a city, we have worked with your climate change, with environment, sustainable engineering. I mean, our environment department here is top-notch for wanting to make sure that they're working on that. And what better way to access free resources with our students who are on the know and in the most current time where we could be partnering with them to use them for their expertise in order to really benefit where we're trying to go as a city? So those are just like, I'm five, I was like Counselor Bernard, I'm like, oh my goodness, what am I going to ask? But in the four seconds reading where we were in your strategic plan, those would be some things that I think could be helpful.
Thanks, yeah, those are great suggestions. And we're interested in pathway programs. For instance, we have an LPN pathway, Licensed Practical Nurse Pathway, to a Registered Nurse Pathway. So it's an abbreviated program that keeps those learners working for longer before they have to take off some concentrated time to complete their credential. So, so one, one of, one of the ways we usually start this, we don't usually, we usually have a slide just as a picture of the university on it, and then the first question we ask is, what comes to mind when you think of UPEI? And then where would you like to see it go in the future? So there, there isn't typically a big presentation that we do in advance of these kinds of consultations, so. Okay, well, it's not your last chance, you can certainly.
Counselor Matur.
Thank you, I just wanted to say, I didn't get a chance to say thank you for addressing my question. It certainly looks at from the other perspective, because like I said, my lens was a little bit on the financial contributions more than the partnerships we're having with, you know, with the students and various things in the community. I will say, we, we don't need any help from UPEI in our water. We have the best water in North America, so that we did that all on our own.
We've heard.
So we don't, that's Richard here, so we won't need any help in that area.
Hope he's out in the foyer.
So, but we, we, we want to pay attention to that water quality, though, and make sure we know how we got that so that we can maintain it as well.
So going back to 2000, when we did start the construction of the Cary facility, the Bella Lion Center, that has a deal between both UPEI, Charlottetown, City of Charlottetown, and Stratford, but the lion's share comes from the city at 87%, 13% from your, from the university. But the capital, I think we share that also, again, 87-13. We also shared on the turf field. But some of the issues that took place after the infrastructure was in place was getting access to those fields that, or those sport venues that the city provided funding. That's something you have to look at, because I know Bruce Donaldson is trying to provide a, a better feel option there at McAdam Field, hopefully turf, lighted field. So they're already, he's already reaching out to the city. So you have to take into consideration that, you know, if we provide funding, we're hoping to get a, a good deal in how we share those facilities. And I think that strategic priority falls under stronger presence in the community with community partnerships. Can you address that?
Well, I could, what I can say is that when the university goes in, into partnership with anybody, then we want to make sure that we have a strong deal on both sides. And I, I, I do not know the details of the 2000 agreement as it was developed. I do know that sport facilities almost worldwide are in short supply, and so scheduling and access are always issues. I also know that the actual running, maintenance, staffing of facilities becomes important. And so I think those are things, when we, when we make those kinds of agreements, we have to make sure that we look into the long-term sustainability of those agreements and make sure that they're, they're workable. And it has to include that ongoing maintenance and staffing that goes forward. So I, I would say that we probably need to look at the agreement and come up with how we're going to jointly make sure that there's good access to the facilities by everybody.
Sounds great, because there's a Cary stakeholder meeting on Thursday.
I think I'm going to be at that, I might say the very same thing. So I'll study harder before that.
Counselor Matur.
Just a quick question for Wendy. Wendy, I think you said the, the international students in Rome had dropped 50%?
Just the first year. So there's four years of enrollment, so just the new students, so it's 172 total students out of about 1,000 total that we have of international. So because they're, that's just the first year, and then there's about 400 in second year, 400 in third year, 400 in fourth year. So the problem is going to grow bigger as the fourth years graduate, and that small class goes into second year, and another small class comes into first year. That's how it's going to compound.
Okay, okay. Because I think when the federal government made their, I thought it was a 25% reduction.
They made a 35% reduction in the total number of visas that they were going to offer to international students in Canada across the whole country. And then that was allocated out to all of the provinces.
Okay.
So, and then, but within our university, it's, it's, it's only about, I'm trying to do math, it's only about a nine or 10% loss overall right now, because it's only the first year, because four years' worth of students, but the new ones all just come into first year. So that's where we're taking that hit. So we didn't go down 50% overall, we only went down 50% in the first year.
Okay. And these regulations, the federal government said how long they were going to be in place?
Forever, as far as we know. I was recently at a conference of university presidents, and Minister Mark Miller was there and did an interview with the president of McGill University. And so all the presidents were asking plenty of questions about that. But it's for the foreseeable future, because this is the federal government trying to adjust its immigration patterns to Canada, same as in P E I, and making sure that the infrastructure is in place to support the new Canadians as they arrive. And they're, they're particularly targeting post-secondary sector, which includes colleges and universities, because students frequently are temporary foreign workers in Canada while they're here, and they're trying to reduce that category of immigration in particular. And so they, they've gone that, and they also are talking about, you've heard this, bad actors in the sector, and the sector is asking them why they didn't simply target the bad actors as opposed to the whole sector, but that's what they decided to do. And Minister Miller has been clear that it will be enduring.
Thank you.
Counselor Beck.
Yeah, thank you. Wendy, I have a question about, and I don't know what the terminology would be, but I do know that there have been either satellite programs or reciprocal programs that are UPEI-connected that exist in other countries. Are they going to be, I guess, first of all, I don't know what the current status of those is, and are they going to be part of the strategic plan going forward? Because I know that there were, you know, I just think of, I know, I think back when I was doing some education stuff, I think we had like a, a program at Grand Prairie, Alberta, and I think there were some overseas programs.
Yeah, Helsinki, Egypt.
So are they, are they going to be part of the, are they, are they going to be part of this whole process as well, too? I guess, and kind of maybe a bit of a lay of the land on that, and maybe what that potentially could look like in the future?
Sure, so, so UPEI has one regional campus. It is in Cairo, Egypt. It is called UPEI Cairo Campus. It is operated by a company there called University, Universities Canada, Egypt. And what it is, is they offer, UPEI programs are delivered there, so it's all UPEI content. And the instructors, the curricula are developed here, and they're delivered by instructors there. We have three programs there right now in engineering, computer science and business. And they will continue, there's about 800 students there, and it's going quite well. We are intending to continue that programming. There, there is a bit of a per-head complicated financial model that goes with it, but the students that are registered there are registered, they're students of UPEI. They have a UPEI student number, they have a UPEI email address. When they graduate, they get a UPEI parchment. So we are just delivering our programming there. That's valuable programming because it does give access to our programming to students in a part of the world where I would argue they need more access to education. And we offer very good quality education, and it's an opportunity for us to have global impact around the kinds of, of values and content that UPEI can deliver. So we're in discussions there now. It's, as you might imagine, a complicated story, because they have to have an edict from the king to pursue more programs at UPEI Cairo, but they would like to expand programming to include a few others. So the provost at UPEI Cairo, who is from Charlottetown, is working with the deans here in Charlottetown on the possibility of adding some new programs there. From our perspective here, that would just mean having more students there taking our content developed here. So it doesn't put a pressure on Charlottetown at all.
Okay, I'm glad to hear that. And I, I guess the other question is, I mean, in the face of declining revenues and all that, you're, you're going to have to make tough decisions, and you'll have to be putting everything on the table in terms of analyzing what goes and what stays. It sounds to me like that's a little more formulaic and a little kind of, maybe a little, kind of similar to what's going on at the med school with memorial curriculum being delivered here at UPEI and that sort of thing.
Exactly.
And so, where was I going with my question? Yeah, so I, I guess at the end of the day, it will be, it sounds to me like it's a little bit of a different approach, maybe, that you do when you look at that, when you're looking at things on the table, that international connection or the external programming, external connections. You know, we talk about community partnerships here, but we're also talking about global connections. That's kind of a different, almost maybe a little bit of a different lens, possibly? Or same kind of?
It is, and, and there's about 20% non-Egyptian students also on that campus. So, so international students can get access to UPEI program at UPEI Cairo Campus. So that's useful as well. And from, in terms of a different lens, yes, it's a little bit complicated, but we would look at establishing partnerships with other countries where we could deliver other kinds of programs. We would do that very cautiously right now, because there's a certain investment required in that, and that might not be the risk that we're willing to take at this particular time. I have been saying that I'm interested in stabilizing UPEI itself in many ways, including financially, and already talked about sustainability of, of the institution of UPEI as, as well as sustainability more generally. So that's a little bit more internal focus than building more external programs, but this external program has some stability. So with, with relatively low risk, we can grow that, which will enhance them and also enhance us. But more of those would, would not be high on our agenda at the moment.
Well, Wendy, you covered a lot. Wendy, just quickly, economic generator, what's, what's the yearly budget for the university? Hundred and eighty million?
Yeah, about a hundred, all-in consolidated, but, but the operating budget is, is closer to 130 million.
Yeah, and that's in Charlottetown. And then how many other campuses do you have? You have the one in Cairo, but that.
That doesn't apply to Cairo. It's, it's a completely separate financial model. No, no, no Canadian money is going to Cairo. Money comes from Cairo, so it's by contract.
So the economic value, the intellectual value is, I'm sure, a, 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 any community would want to have that because it does have a return. And when I look at UPEI, when I was there in 77 to 81, there was only 1,300 students. Now it's 58, with 33% international students, representing over 100 nationalities. It's a whole different place. So you, you have to be focused, you're also focused on how you can take, take into consideration that community of interest, that is, place of gathering, place of celebration, place of education, place of recreation. Those areas have, I'm sure, are being addressed as you move forward, correct?
Yes, and, and we're, we're interested in participating in the community and strengthening the community. We're, we're also interested in participating in the knowledge economy, and, and there's a great resource here, and we would like UPEI to be the go-to place for information for the city and for the whole province. We, we know that we're, there's fake news, there's also narrow news. As I said at another event, AI is making sure that we only ever are exposed to things we already believe in. So our own beliefs we already have are just reinforced by the news feeds and so on. If you search for something on your phone, like a waterproof coat, then you just get more and more ads for waterproof coats. That's the same system, that's making sure that anything you search for, you just get more and more about what you already know. The university is the opposite of that. So if you want, you know, people to learn how to look for information, seek for information deliberately, look for opposing views, make sure that they have a breadth of input before they make a particular decision, so evidence-based decision-making, the university is a go-to place for you. And we want you to be confident in our graduates that when they come out, they're going to be able to take that skill forward. It's an important skill, it's a key skill that is developed in any, any university education. I would encourage everybody to take up post-secondary. We hope it's at UPEI, but it's more important that you take it up at all somewhere, because those skills are really critical in the success of our society.
And for your information, the university came to us about the whole School of Business, School of Medicine, partnership, not partnership, but getting in support of it. And I think we were one of the first councils to support it by unanimous resolution to ensure that this School of Medicine materializes, which it is before our own eyes on University Avenue.
Yeah, and it's already having a positive net effect on physicians coming to the island because they want to be where there is a medical school. The new contract with Health PEI is helping with that as well, it's having a stabilizing effect. And we also know that the majority of students will stay where they are educated. So these are island students that will get their degree on the island and be about 70% more likely to stay, or 70% of them will stay on the island to do their medical practice.
Just a comment on your economic impact. It's been a while since we had one done at the university, but we are going to do one because it's great, and of course, it will change now with the medical school. But we will be happy to share that with you. I think you'll be quite impressed with some of the numbers, but that is on our agenda.
Because I think the economic generator is usually five times, seven times the budget that is spent at an institution or at a facility.
Yeah, and then as we grow, we attract more people working there, and they're the people that are looking to go out and eat in restaurants and go buy books in bookstores and shop in the clothing stores and put their children in schools and put their children in dance lessons. And so it, it's a great economic contributor to the area where it is.
No, we need to buy properties and homes so we can get the property tax. No, we need to buy properties and homes so we can get the property tax.
They do that, too.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. Um, we'll be, I'll be following with interest. It'll be coming out in twenty-twenty-five or even by the end of this year?
The plan is, is, uh, teed up to be finished by spring. So we would be happy to come back with a presentation shared in advance, uh, of what we're looking at with the, the plan so that you can comment on that. Right now we are in the input collection phase. We do have a steering committee. It includes alumni and, uh, uh, other members of the community, donors. And they are going to come together and put all that information and, and work on those themes. But a few are emerging pretty strongly already that I shared. And then we will put some implementation plans behind that and we will do another round of consultation.
Thank you, Myrtle J. Thank you, Wendy. Thank you, Nicole. Thank you very much. Okay. Thank you, Wendy. Thank you. Danny?
Thank you, Your Worship. Just for the information of, uh, members of council, I just wanted to introduce, uh, one of our newest staff members. Melanie Bailey, uh, is at the back besides Emily. And she's our new strategic initiatives officer. So please say hello if you, if you haven't and, uh, welcome her.
Melanie's coming from Ursa. Okay. Move, I need a motion to move into a closed session as per section one nineteen, subsection one D of the Municipal Government Act. D is Human Resources Matters, including labor relations or employee negotiations. New CAO recruitment matter. Moved by Counselor Ramsey, seconded by Counselor Bernard. All in favor? Okay, so we're asking staff to leave, but...
I can a open me- a motion to adjourn. All in favor? Council drawn?
Yeah, motion to leave, yeah.
Thank you. Take-